We'll call in session, the Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, council meeting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Bridge.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor James Mosby.
Present.
So for the invocation, can I, would you bless us with your presence? Please stand.
Thank you. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, King of kings, Lord of lords, God Almighty, who lives forever, we humbly come before your throne in the name of your son, Jesus Christ the Lord, by whom all things were made and by whom all things consist, who is co-equal in glory and power, whom you sent to die on a cross for us, our sins, and to rise again on a third day, by whom all men receive salvation and redemption. In his name we approach you and ask for your blessing upon this meeting. We give you thanks for our mayor and our city council, our leadership. Father, we pray that you would give them great wisdom as they preside over the matters that affect the lives of so many. Give them a servant's heart, for true leadership serves the people. Give them tough skin. Give them the courage to make the difficult and right choices and give them favor with the people. We give you thanks for our policemen, our firemen, and our city staff. We thank you for their faithful service. We pray for their safety, for wisdom, for perseverance, as they execute the duties of the positions they hold. We pray for provision for them and their families. Father, we pray for unity with our city council and our city staff. Christ taught us that a house divided against itself will not stand. Father, give them great unity. If there be any differences, may we rise above them and serve the people of our city, whose lives are impacted by their cooperation. We thank you, Father, for the citizens of this city, which are here today and have concerns and have, that are very important to them. We pray that these concerns be addressed in your way, in your time, for you are never late. You have all power and are able to do greater things than we could ask or think. Regardless of what position any of us may hold in this room today, may we all be swift to hear, slow to speak, slow to wrath. May we remember that each of us are people with families and deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. I thank you that we, as a city, recognize our need to include you. And please preside over this meeting and bless all the people of our great city and those in this room. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Where are we? Ready? Begin. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. All right. So I did a presentation yesterday at the Dewey Center for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And we have a current presentation, a proclamation on Human Trafficking Awareness Month 2025. We have a short podium. So, Human Traffic Awareness Month 2025. Whoop. Moving. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern slavery that occurs in every strait, state, including California, wherein victims are forced to work in various forms of labor, exploitation, exploitation, including but not limited to commercial sex acts and other services that are induced through force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas due to its isolated and discreet nature, many individuals across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in their communities. And where it is estimated that more than 28 million people around the world are victims of human sex trafficking. 28 million. Whereas human trafficking victims face a cruelty that has no place in civilized world is a crime that can take many forms and one that tears at our social fabric, debases our common humanity, and violates what we stand for as a country. And whereas increased education about how to identify human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of in-state resources and services for those affected by criminal exploitation can be, can help decrease the number of future victims. And whereas the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force is committed to using all applicable laws and resources for investigating human trafficking and prosecuting those engaged in it. And whereas the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force has worked diligently to bring awareness to the fact that human trafficking occurs closer to home than one might think. That California ranks number one in the country for reported human trafficking cases, and that Santa Barbara County is home to hundreds of survivors of trafficking and exploitation. Whereas Human Traffic Awareness Month is an opportunity to recognize the critical role all Santa Barbara County residents play in preventing, reporting, adjudicating these heinous crimes. Now therefore, I, James Mosby, do hereby recognize January 2025 as Human Traffic Awareness Month in the City of Long Poak, and I call the observant's attention to all of our citizens. Thank you. And Allison, you have?
Just a few things to say.
Few things to say. Maybe you could give us some pointers that's going on in our community directly to help people in observation.
Well, we won't try to be that blatant.
Not blatant, but if you can. Anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Allison Wales. I'm the Associate Director at the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, and it is an honor to be here to receive this from the city once again, because it is so very powerful and important to bring awareness, because it's something that we deal with every day. Recognizing January as a National Human Trafficking Awareness Month is a significant step in promoting the understanding and mobilizing efforts against trafficking. This includes labor trafficking, as well as sex trafficking and CSEC victims. I'm here to remind everyone that trafficking does exist in our community, and more often than we want to admit, our children that attend our schools are trafficked and victimized. Rarely does a week go by that we do not have some contact with a victim who has been trafficked in some way, whether that be male or female. The center has been involved since 2013 with this collaborative. We are partnered at this table because CSEC, commercially sexually exploited child, and sex trafficking are sexual trauma that survivors must learn to cope with over time. Trafficking is not a new phenomenon, but the efforts to educate our community, as well, as well as the professionals that serve these survivors, such as law enforcement, medical personnel, emergency personnel, reflect a standard, a sustained effort to combat trafficking, and there's so many, many myths around it. It is important to remember that boys, men and boys, as well as LGBTQ individuals, foster care youth, and those with domestic violence backgrounds are vulnerable to trafficking with, and only emphasizes the diverse range of the victims. We're going to keep pushing it. We're going to say 50 years, forever, but we have been around for over 50 years. The center has stood for advocacy and education. We are grateful to be in our schools, educating our children about the good touch and bad touches, as well as healthy relationships, and of course, what human trafficking looks like and how to be safe. So thank you for your time and allowing the center to continue to provide these services in the school district and in the, in the community. If you have any questions or interest, give the center a call here in Long Poak. Thank you, Councilmembers. Thank you.
Seat manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Next slide. I wanted to say a special thank you to the fire department. You know, not only are they making us safe and watching out for us, but you know, a lot of them went down to the Palisade Fire with their Type III engine of the Santa Barbara County and tried to contain that fire. And they also, some of them went to Eaton with our urban rescue team, search and rescue. And I wanted to thank them. I really appreciate them doing that extra effort. We'll be doing a, hosting a children's garden program next Wednesday, January 29th, 2:00 to 3:30, at the Long Poak Library. This will be at the Grossman's Gallery for kids eight through 12. And we'll have a few more later in the year. If you miss this one, I think there's another one in April. Next slide. We are starting to take applications for the Safe and Sound fireworks. We'll be taking those up until February 1st. It'll be for nonprofits who are from Long Poak. You can get the copies for those applications at the Fire Station One at 115 South G Street. And we'll be taking those applications from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Next slide. We are extending private swim lessons at the Aquatic Center. There'll be four days of training, or lessons that they can take between Monday through Thursday, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. We have private and semi-private lessons available through our online registration only, so if you have questions, you can ask the Parks and Rec Division at 875-8100. And this is the one I was like, I always had a great time with my daughter when we went to this. The Parks and Rec Division is inviting the community to come on out and put their dancing shoes on for the father-daughter dance. It will be on Friday, the 31st, Saturday, the 1st, and Sunday, the 2nd, from 6:00 to 8:30. Doors will open at 5:00 for pitchers. Tickets are $30. Additional children, the same family, $15. They do sell out, so you'll need to pre-register for that event. And then finally, I want to remind everybody, we had observed Martin Luther King Day on Monday, so trash, recycle, and green waste will be delayed. I think I do have one more slide, actually. I know we have a lot of city boards and commissions and committee members. I wanted to let everybody know that we're going to try and put together a little training center, training packet for everybody as they, they move into those new positions and learn their roles and responsibilities. Right now, if I could, I'd like to turn it over to Kristi Alarcon for an update on a
Am I loud enough? If I could get all of you to pull your calendars out, I'm sure Councilmember Starbuck will be happy to find a date that works for all of you. I have February 18th and February 20th for a special meeting for the ad hoc workshop for the general plan amendments. Hoping to get consensus tonight, so I can email the consultant, so he could book his, book this meeting. And the time would be 4:00. I'm hoping just a couple hours, maybe three.
Clarify, it's at three hours, both days?
No, just one or the other.
I'm available either.
Both days?
Yeah.
Councilmember Starbuck, both days?
The 18th's already a meeting, I mean.
No, shouldn't be. February 18th? That's the third Tuesday of the month?
Yes.
Sorry, my bad. Four to six is what I was going to do, so you could still make the council meeting right after.
Feed me dinner.
Little Caesar's $5 pizzas.
18th, 18th. 18th.
Would you like just the two hours? I was, on the 18th, I could try to do 3:30 and give us a little more time, but I'm hoping two hours will be sufficient.
Two hours, Jim. Two hours.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, can we clarify what date it was? February 18th?
February 18th, four to six.
Thank you.
So to the city, you had a, you're going to be doing a little training for the committee or commissioners. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I think that was a care and a concern.
Yes.
In the last four years with the COVID and everything going down, I think some people lost some direction, so if, that'll definitely help. I know there are some people that are concerned with that, so.
Yeah, we'll have a lot of new people, too, so it'd be good.
Okay. The other question that was out there is if you could update us with future council requests as they're coming up or getting close to be coming up, if you had something on your list. I don't think we have any that are right yet available, but we have some coming up in, in March, I think, is the closest one we have coming up, I believe.
I would like to comment on that one.
I think we got one February 4th.
Do we have one February 4th?
For the theater ad hoc?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
One's coming up. Did you want me to put something together? I'm sorry.
Well, if you had something that's just coming up, just, I think there was a question wanting to know and make sure that our things didn't fall off the list.
Okay, we can do that next time.
Okay. And then Councilmember Bridge has a question for that.
Well, I have several on this topic. There's about a dozen council requests that are, at this time, no date on them. And.
I'm sorry, sir, your, your question is on the future agenda list, is that correct? Thank you.
Yes. Called upcoming, I believe.
I'm sorry?
It's called upcoming, I believe. Upcoming.
Opposed future council agenda items.
It's a future agenda list.
Okay, thank you. We have what looks like about 10 to me that have been sitting there. One is over three years old. That's essentially a pocket veto, is what they would call it in the federal realm. You just take an action and then it sits here for three years. I'm really glad to see the February 18th one come up. I would, of course, ask to have, aft, ask the lawyer if this is on the agenda, since it's on the public notice.
I think we only have one that's three, but that's an ongoing one. We try, we try and get them back as soon as possible, whenever we can do the research and, and I'm not sure what you're asking, but if you want.
Well, I'm asking the lawyer first if I can make a motion.
Oh, okay, sure.
On this topic.
You can ask questions to the city manager about the future agenda list right now during the, during the city manager report. Making a motion to do something, it probably depend on what the motion is.
Okay. Well, I'll say the motion and then we can decide where it appropriately should be. How's that? So I'd like to move that the council request is made and approved, that it's agendaed at the next council meeting for the purpose of either providing an update, allowing the council to provide further direction, if there's confusion as to what it is, discussing any obstacles the staff may have on completing it, and establishing a promise date. As I said, we have, the very first one on my list has been here since 1/5/2021.
So.
So, when can I make that motion?
That's essentially a council request for a future agenda item, so you can do that right now.
Okay. So I can do that now?
You can do that right now.
All right, that's my motion.
I'd give you a second with that.
I'll give you a third.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your motion?
Sure. I've learned to write them down, because I can't remember them, so. I move that whenever a council request is made and approved.
Are you, so, so you're asking for the council requests that are on the future agenda list? Is that correct? All those that are listed on the future agenda?
I can't fix the past. I'm asking for go forward. Right in the future, when we make a council request.
Okay, that's why I'm asking for clarification, because what it sounded to me is like you wanted something what's on the future agenda list, but that's not what you're asking for. You're asking for all future council requests?
Yes, ma'am.
To provide it, what?
So when a council request is made and approved, the request shall be agendaed at the next council meeting, so we can talk about it. And the purpose of the discussion will be to provide an update on the progress. Perhaps the staff will come back and have a solution already, which would be great. Allow the council to give further clarification, or at least talk about it, which last week we couldn't do, because it wasn't on the agenda. Discuss any challenges or obstacles or resources needed by staff to be able to complete it, and establish a date for the completion of the request. And that'll, in my mind, assure that these requests get completed and they're appropriately scheduled, and they'll sit on a list as, like I say, essentially a pocket veto.
Okay, so, sorry, that is, that's not what I understood you, the first time you said it. I thought you were asking for an item to come back and talk about the things that were already on the list, just like the city clerk understood.
See, here's the challenge, here's the challenge I have. I bring up a council request, and we can't talk about it, because it's the first time we've heard about it.
Right.
And we have to agenda it.
Right.
Then it never gets agendaed.
Right.
So I was very disappointed. I made a council request last session. I think it's timely. We have a theater project, we want to get it done, but we could not talk about it, we could not do anything. And it did not get on the list again. So somehow, we have to be able to move things forward.
Right.
And so whenever it's appropriate to make that motion, please let me know.
So when you make a council request, you can ask staff that you want it to be on the next agenda? And then if staff is, thinks that they're able to do that, then they will say, okay. If staff does not think that they're able to do that, then they can explain why they don't think they're able to do it.
But you're in a catch 22, because when I make a council request, I can't talk about it. And so if I can't talk about it unless it's agendaed, when can I talk about it?
You can request to have an agenda item to talk about it, and you can say you want that at the next meeting. And if the council, if the staff thinks they can bring it back at the next meeting, they will say, okay. If they don't think they can bring it back in the next meeting, then they will explain why, and then you can.
I believe that's exactly what I did at the last council meeting. I made a request for the Theater Ad hoc Committee to come back, and we're sitting here tonight, and it's not on the agenda. So where is the policing function for not having pocket vetos?
I, I would have to go back and look at the tape, but what, when we talked about it at a staff level, we did not remember you saying that you wanted it at the very next meeting. But if you do say that, then the staff at, in that moment, will either say, okay, or will explain why it's not possible to bring it back at the next meeting. But, so this motion that you're making right now, to get back to that, would be an ongoing policy that the city has, that if a council request is made, there always must be, at the next meeting, a discussion item about that council request. And that's a policy that can be adopted, but we need, if we're going to change our policy, that is something that has to be on an agenda to change the city's policy. And that would probably be something that we'd put in the handbook.
And I can't do that now, I have to do that at council request.
Yeah, it would be an agenda item to have a city policy to do that, or to put it in the handbook. And you can make a council request to have an agenda item to change the city policy like that.
Okay. Well, let me finish, let me finish my comment, please. So tonight, we're discussing these, right? Can I make a request that we get a date on every one of the ones that are open?
Yes, you can make a request for that.
And specifically for council requests? Is that what you're looking for?
No, I think I'm, can I make a motion on that, since we're discussing this, and they're all sitting there with no dates on them? Can I make a motion?
You, you can ask, you can ask the city manager to bring back dates for each one of the items that does not have dates.
I'm sorry, I could not hear you, my phone went off.
You can ask the city manager to bring back dates for each one of the items that does not have dates.
Do I have to make a motion for that to be mandatory?
No. If you want it to be official, you can make a motion to do that, but it's just a question or a request.
All right. I'm not going to do that out of respect for the city manager, but we are going to solve this problem. And if it takes us 12 sessions of me sitting up here and talking about it, I'll do it. But we're going to solve it.
So if the city attorney, I think, one of the levels can happen is many times you can ask something to come back for discussion, or, or discussion and action. And when the action comes up, usually the staff report's a lot thicker. And I think what you're asking for, to be able to come back for discussion, if you just ask that, many times they can bring it back on the next council meeting for discussion. It's when you have discussion and action that it gets a lot more complicated. So if you're looking for an item to come back for next, next meeting, it's relatively simple to put it on the agenda for discussion only, correct? So get ahead, none?
That is correct, yes.
If you wanted to, we could research and put dates on these, and when they, when they come back. Sometimes they take six months, sometimes they take a year, sometimes you do electric studies, they take a long time, and we lose staff, and unfortunately, they take a long time. But I mean, I think that what I'm looking at, I see about 13 of them on here, and the oldest one being a little over a year for public gathering. I mean, that should have came back already, I apologize, but we try and get these off this report as fast as we can, based upon our staffing limit, so.
Well, that's why I'm not.
But if you'd like dates?
I'm not mandating, you know, making the motion that they all come back. But I see one on here, discussion of, I forget the number, but it's the cabaret. We all know that's ridiculous code. It's been on there for three years. So I, I don't want to get into a contest, but again, we're in a catch 22, because when we bring it up in council, council request, we can't talk about it, because it's not agendaed. So the implication there is it has to come back to be able to discuss it.
Yeah, I think the one that you write, that's on there, has been on there a while, has been going through our ordinances and seen ones that are outdated, so it's an ongoing one. On that one, that's, was 21. The rest of them are about less than a year, so, but.
Well, I don't know. I read that code, it's ridiculous code.
Yeah.
We could change that in about an hour and kill that.
We have had items, agenda items in the past, which is just an agenda item to discuss the future agenda items list, and you get a s, update from staff on every single one of the items that are on the agenda items list. And then council can decide if you want to take some off, or you get an update on the ones that are on there, and so we can do, that, it's possible to do an agenda item like that as well.
Okay, well, I'll wait till the council request.
And I understand his frustration. I know there was one on there for almost seven years, and then it just fell off and disappeared. So I can understand the frustration, so. Okay. Any other questions for the city manager? Councilmember Vega?
This motion here, was it clarified? Was there a motion, or was? Yeah, but we can do a council request, and you know, the clarification left it a little vague in my mind. It sounds like we ran into something where you said, we can't, and we can, with this we can, or are we going to? But it sounds like we have to make a council request just for clarification, I'm not trying to override you, that, to get the policy changed in the handbook. And I think that's where we need to go with this. So for clarification, we're not looking for someone to say, hey, we can possibly change the policy to say it comes back on the next meeting, or the next meeting, depending on staff. But to have the item come back within 60 days would be a policy change that we could live with, instead of waiting for someone to decide if we have time to do it or not. I think this is a business meeting, and I think we need to treat it as business, because I think with three council members that voted for these, these council requests, I think it should be a business item. We shouldn't be passing the buck here. We should have it brought back. Okay? I don't think it should be a matter of if we think we can do it or we can't do it. You know, they have the resources there, if you have to spend a couple bucks to do it. We need to do this, so that we, so the respect's there on both sides. So I'm not sure. So I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, if that's where we need to go with this motion, because I, I was left a little bit lost. So I'm going to retract my second to the motion, because it appears the clarification, we'll wait to the end of the meeting. Then we'll see what, what we move from there, so... So without anybody else wanting to make, I think you wanted to retract your motion as well until the end?
Yeah, I'll pull it back to the council.
Okay. All right, so...
I have something else I wanted to ask the city manager about.
Go ahead, Councilor Paul?
City manager, I'm just taking a little bit of a different subject approach. Obviously, we're, everyone's been traumatized with all the fires down south. Some was in, you know, controlling the fire was pretty difficult, issues with water, et cetera. But mainly, it was a bunch of wind, really high winds. So obviously, we have some sort of plan in Lompoc. We're always prepared, I'm hopeful. But I've had some people talk about what happens when the worst case happens here, or we get high winds. Have we adjusted or updated our planning and our preparedness?
There's been a lot of discussion in the background. Sometimes it takes a tragedy, you know, for you to look at, how would you fare if it happened to you? One of the discussions we had is how much water we have up on the hill. I think the estimate was around 12 million gallons. We could produce anywhere from 7 to 10 million gallons, depending on how we treat that water. We go through probably four to six million gallons a day, depending on what time of the year it is. You know, the Palisade Fire had, they reused in about four times their capacity of their normal production. So what does that mean for Lompoc? We'd probably run out of water after one full day. We would hope we'd be able to get it under containment on that, but you know, it also emphasized how important on some of the work that we're doing with the old CC grant and our other communities, how we can create interties. That being said, if you had a bunch more tanks, you know, at Mission Hills, or Vandenberg, or the base, if we had intertie agreements, or we work, we work forward to try and intertie some of these, we'd have a much higher capacity. So yeah, we have looked at it. I know there's also some concern about vegetation around our equipment. And I think that's something that we're going to go out, because we want to try and do everything we can to prevent something like that from happening here.
I appreciate that, and just for me, and I'm sure maybe the rest of the council and the community, just getting some sort of regular update that in, some sort of worst-case contingency that we are prepared and we have thought about it, would be reassuring for me. Thank you.
Good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that, we'll close the city manager report and come back to public comment on consent calendar. That's the four main items on consent calendar. If the city clerk would read those into the record for me, just in title only.
Mayor, before we start that, I have to make an announcement pursuant to the Brown Act. Item number three is an amendment to the city manager's employment agreement. It adjusts the salaries and benefits for the city manager as described in the staff report and attachments. The recommendation in the staff report is to adopt. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Do you want to read into the record before we have council, before we have...
Let's, just go ahead and read them in, and maybe somebody will stimulate, get a phone call from him, if you could do that for me.
Consent calendar consists of approval of agreement for operation of the countywide library system, adoption of resolution number 6732, approving the update of the City of Lompoc Transit Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Goal for federal fiscal years 2025 through 2027. Approval of the Third Amendment to City Manager Employment Agreement with Dean Albro, and the successor agency, adoption of resolution number SA 15, approving the administrative budget and adoption of resolution number SA 16, approving the recognized obligation payment schedule for July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2026.
Anybody have any public comment on those four items? Any council members wish to pull any of those off? Anybody want to make a motion to adopt? I'll make a motion to adopt consent calendar. So we got Councilor Vega, and then Councilor Ball. So go ahead and vote.
Councilor Vega?
Put your, put your motion, you got your, do your motion first. Motion, but, second motion, here we go. Now we can vote, correct?
Now you can vote.
Try again. That passes 5-0. New machines, technology, for those of you who haven't been here. It's, that's a pretty colors. All right, moving on to staff presentations, announcements, requests. Anything out there? Very good. Oral communications. This is on, anything else in the city that's not on the list? Here we go. Come on down.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Michael Baker, and I have the honor of being the CEO for United Boys and Girls Clubs Santa Barbara County. A little over a month ago, we had our children here for the gold card ceremony. Want to continue to thank you for, for that. I'm, I'm here to make a really exciting announcement for the City of Lompoc, because this is the first time, at least I've been here 10 years, in the 10 years that I've been here, and any, at least 10 years prior to that, that we actually have, the highest honor that we have in Boys and Girls Clubs is picking the youth of the year. And that's given to a child that's a member of our club for at least two years in good standing. They have to be between 14 and 19 years old. And this year, for the first time, and certainly at least the last 15 years, a member of our Lompoc Club won the Youth of the Year for the United Boys and Girls Club of Santa Barbara County. So very excited about that, and Monique will be here, I'll be bringing her here to speak about Boys and Girls Clubs during one of the public comment sections. And I think you'll be very impressed with, with this young lady and, and the path that she's taking. And I want to continue to thank each and every one of you for your support, and encourage you to come down and see the Boys and Girls Clubs, and see the, the great work that our staff are doing there on a daily basis. Again, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Moving on. We'll close the oral communication. Moving on to appointments. Council appointments, committees, commissions. Please, one to Utility Commission first. We have three applicants.
I'll nominate Martin Bender.
Okay. I'll take John Lynn on that. Does everybody else have one? We have one left. Ken Ryan? He's not on there? Okay. All right, so we have those two.
I'm sorry, who, who's appointing who?
I've got Martin Bender.
I took John Lynn. So I'll have to make a motion to approve those two. You second it?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll second. All right. So we have Bridge made a first on that, a second, there we go. Goat. Very good. That passes 5-0. All right, we have a Public Safety Commissioner. We have one applicant in there. Who has vacancies?
I'm losing track of the ones that are made against my name. So I was wondering if we could get a summary list of...
I believe there's one in your box. Did you put one in? Oh, external list, okay.
Without knowing if I have one, I don't dare.
Can the city clerk, do you know who's, how many we've got, and who's in the Public Safety Commission as of right now?
What's the question?
Who's already been appointed? How many have been appointed to the Public Safety Commission?
Currently, there are three members, Angela Baca Cordovas, Juan Herrera, and Maria Agunaga. And there are two vacancies, one for Councilmember Ball, and one for Councilmember Bridge.
Councilmember Bridge, you have one vacancy. You have one applicant here.
So my Public Safety Commissioner doesn't know that they're not a Public Safety Commissioner, so I guess they need to reapply.
I'll, I'll nominate Alec.
All right. I'll give you a second with that.
I'm, I'm sorry. Did you nominate somebody?
Alec Smith.
Thank you.
I'll make motion that we accept this.
And I'll give a second on appointing Alec Smith to you. Vote, vote, vote. There we go. 5-0. All right, moving on to the public hearing on the general plan. And nobody, does anybody else, anything else? Any other list that came in? No?
I had, I had one question to the city clerk, if you wouldn't mind. The Public Safety Commission, since we just voted on it. Stacy, I know we haven't had, or the meetings are different. Do we have anybody that's never attended, as far as absenteeism, that you know of on the, on the Public Safety Commission? Just curious, because...
Currently listed would be Juan Herrera.
Yeah, and, and if we wanted to remove somebody from the Public Safety Commission and replace them, would we have to talk to you privately, or would we do it publicly?
It would be a public request. It would be something that you would do on the dais.
Okay.
It could be done automatically if there were three meetings that an individual missed consecutively, without any reasoning. But we, there were not, there have not been three meetings that have...
There have not been three meetings?
Been held in a, in a row.
Yeah, because I, I'd like to replace mine. I'm not sure exactly what the format is, you know? The Public Safety Commissioner, Juan Herrera. Not sure if this is the proper way to do it or not, to let you know. That way, we can have a vacancy.
Maybe we can, we can bring something back to you the next meeting.
Thanks, appreciate it.
We good. Let's move on to the public hearing. General Plan and Zoning Code Amendments. Do you have something to say? That's city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For this item, the staff is again requesting to make a motion to continue the item to February 4th city council meeting. It's just due to the complexity of the multiple zoning and general plan amendments that are being made. And with two new council members, the conflict of interest segmentation analysis is not yet completed. So I'd request that you move to continue the item to February 4th.
Looking for a motion on that one, anybody? Motion by Ball. Got a second? Second by Bridge. Let's go ahead and vote. You got your wish, city attorney. You got your wish. So, council request, consider inclusion of the City of Lompoc in the Santa Barbara County Wine Improvement District.
Mayor, on this one, before we start the item, there are two council members who've informed me about financial interests that they have in this item, and so they're going to recuse themselves. Councilmember Bridge has an ownership interest in one of the wine tasting facilities, as it's defined, that would pay assessments under this proposed Wine Improvement District. And Councilmember Ball has a source of income that is involved in the discussion about the Wine Improvement District. So both of them are going to recuse themselves, leave the dais, and leave the room.
There goes the candy in the back room, huh?
Mayor and council members, this item is the council request that council requested at the last council meeting for consideration of whether the City of Lompoc will allow this proposed Santa Barbara County Wine Improvement District assessments to be imposed in the territorial jurisdiction of the City of Lompoc. On December 17th, 2024, the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution of intent to create this Business Improvement District under the state statutory scheme for Business Improvement Districts. And they set a public hearing for February 11th, where the County Board of Supervisors will make the final decision on whether they will create the Santa Barbara County Wine Improvement District. What the district would do is it would apply in the entire unincorporated area of the county and in any city jurisdiction that consents for the district to apply. And there would be a 1% levy assessment on retail sales at wine tasting facilities. And that dollar amount, the funding that's raised by the assessment, would go to the nonprofit organization Santa Barbara Vintners Association, and they would use that money to conduct promotions and engagement efforts for Santa Barbara County wine tasting facilities. Santa Barbara Vintners Association is a nonprofit organization that promotes the Santa Barbara County wine industry through marketing and education. The 1% assessment would apply to direct-to-consumer retail sales at wine tasting facilities in the county. And this includes sales of wine, a tasting room sales, wine club, sales, events, food, and merchandise. It would not apply to wholesale transactions or out-of-state sales. It is estimated to generate $1.65 million annually for the promotion of winery facilities in Santa Barbara County. And I believe and assume that that number is, if all of the city jurisdictions consent to participate. As I stated, the consent of the city council is required for the assessment to apply it within the City of Lompoc. And when those funds are raised by the district, there's a document called the Management District Plan that was approved by the Board of Supervisors, and it contains all of the ways that are allowed for the Vintners Association to spend the money, what purposes and uses they're allowed to spend the money on. Those are listed on page two of the staff report. There's about 11 or 12 there, different uses. And according to the Management District Plan, 20% of the funds raised can be used for administration costs of the district. 2% can be used for the costs of contracting with a third party to actually do the assessments, collect the money. And 5% of the funds raised can be used to go towards a contingency reserve account for the, the Vintners Association. So we have two resolutions that are attached to the staff report tonight. One is for the city council to consent that the Wine Improvement District will apply within the City of Lompoc. And the second resolution is to oppose the inclusion of Lompoc in the Wine Improvement District. And staff does not have a recommendation. It's up to the city council. And that concludes my staff report. I'm available for questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have a history of this from before? If I remember, August, October 20th, or something?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. So there was a prior attempt back in the latter half of 2020. And the city council at that time decided by a 5-0 vote to not participate in the effort back at that time. And then, and then that district was never created by the county.
By the county in general, or it, did it leave us out, and the county did establish something, or?
The county did not establish.
So they didn't, okay. Do you have any idea if other cities are linking up yet? Have we heard anything?
I do not know. I would assume that, I mean, maybe some of the attendees here in the audience know, but I would think that it's going to be on city agendas.
Much like we are, then.
Tonight, and maybe the next couple of weeks.
We've got so much time they gave us in advance, right? All right, any other questions for the city attorney? Councilor Vega?
If you don't mind. Jeff, you know, I've spoken to a few of the vendors around here in this Lompoc thing, and it seems like most of the benefit is going to be for any businesses and advertising, anything outside of the City of Lompoc. anything outside of the city of Lompoc. The people here that are free enterprise here in Lompoc aren't really on board with some of this from the conversation I've had. So I just wanted to mention that, just as a matter of record, that they want to fly on their own. They don't want somebody else mandating or the county taking the money and 25% going to an entity that they're not even going to see. So they may get some additional advertising out of it. But again, I think that, I'm not on board to support this because of the free enterprise here in Lompoc. I want these people to fly on their own and keep their own money. So I wanted to mention that.
So, any questions? Thank you. And I guess we will now open for public comments. Let's, can we just show hands how many people are coming? Ah, we could do three minutes. Come on down. Well, you, come on down. Come on down. We got, we can do three minutes on them. You're all right.
My name is Janet Blevins. I live in Lompoc, and I attended the supervisors' meeting where they considered this and are, they are strongly in favor. And I think it would bring more recognition to our wine vintners here in Lompoc and more people here to Lompoc to make money for Lompoc.
Thank you. Next. We're not supposed to clap. You guys keep it mellow, we'll get through it, all right? We don't want to, we don't want to scare off the people. It might be opposition or something like that. But you guys can, you guys know how to behave. I know that, I can tell. Be all right.
Oh, really quick, we have a bunch of vintners here that will speak. I am Philip Carpenter, I'm the general manager of the Santa Barbara County Vintners Association. So I'm here as a resource for you if you have further questions. I will let you know that this has reached over 60% approval industry wide. We have mainly Lompoc winemakers and wineries here to speak on behalf. My CEO, Allison Lazzard, is blazing down the highway to come here tonight. She'll be here in a few minutes, but she was just at the Santa Maria hearing. They passed this, so they are going to be part of the wine preserve. I wanted to give you that update. And again, I'm here to answer any questions that you would like from this side of the aisle. But please, listen to our vintners speak. We really want you to be a part of this. We love Lompoc, we love promoting you. You have a world-class wine region here that is getting picked up globally, and we really want to share your story. And we don't want to miss out. So please, just consider that and listen to our vintners. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we don't, you don't have to tell us if you are a Lompoc established business, but if you can, it'd be great.
Hello, my name's Eric Wilson. I grew up here in Lompoc, and I'm now the winemaker for Longoria Wines. Our production facility and tasting room are located at the corner of D and Chestnut. I'm here today to voice my support for the Santa Barbara Vintners Business Improvement District. Being from Lompoc, I've seen the local wine industry evolve from its infancy to the heady heydays of the wine ghetto to where it is today. Home to some of the best, most renowned wines in America, but struggling to attract consumers and not getting the respect it deserves. There are a multitude of reasons why Lompoc should want to join this bid, but I'll only touch on a few. Number one, there's no negative financial impact on Lompoc as the tax will be passed on to the consumers. So because of that, all future marketing efforts highlighting Lompoc and its wineries will essentially be free promotion for Lompoc. Number two, Santa Barbara County Vintners Association will be the entity managing the funds for this bid, as we know. The general manager of SB Vintners, Phil Carpenter, lives right here in Lompoc. No one wants to see the local wine industry thrive more than him. And I sincerely believe that he and others will ensure Lompoc gets its fair share of the spotlight and future promotions. Number three, even if you're on the fence, this bid only runs for five years, which is in business practically a trial run. I believe the smart thing to do is to opt in now, gather data, evaluate the impact, and reconsider it in five years rather than letting this pass by and risk being left behind. Lompoc is the beating heart of Santa Rita Hills and Santa Barbara County wine, producing the lifeblood of our industry. Without Lompoc, our local community is not whole. As is usually the case, united, we're stronger than we are divided. So I urge you to join this bid, and we can all build a brighter future together. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down. Aren't you supposed to be tutoring somebody in a math class?
I, I was earlier, thank you. Good evening, members of the city council and mayor. Thank you for listening to our concerns. My name is Lisa Liberati, and my husband, Michael Fogelman, and I own Sweets or Sellers, a small winery with a production facility and tasting room here in Lompoc. We commute here every weekend from Los Angeles, and when events like this or harvest call us up here. We opened our tasting room here seven years ago in part because of the thriving wine community in the Savani Industrial Park. Over the years, we've moved our wine storage here, and in 2020, we moved our production facility to Daskin Sellers on West Laurel. We love this community, and we have always been here to support it, whether it's the annual Rotary Wine Tasting, the restoration of the Lompoc Theater, the local hospital, or the many organizations associated with Vandenberg Space Force Base. We would not be able to survive as a tasting room without the support of the citizens of Lompoc, which we greatly appreciate. I came here to ask for the support of the city council in keeping Lompoc in the wine bid district. This is important for helping all of Santa Barbara County compete with other wine, well-funded wine areas like Paso Robles and Temecula. We've seen how well-targeted marketing can help a community, as well as how to try to go it alone just means getting drowned out by entities with more resources. If Lompoc elects to erase itself from the map of the Santa Barbara County wine region, it's hard to imagine how Sweets or Sellers will be able to maintain a business here. We will be faced with the choice that many of our former neighbors have already made, which is move our tasting room to a city that supports the wine community or close our business for good. We want to keep our tasting room open and thriving in Lompoc. We hope that you want to keep us here too. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Wait, hold on one second. Do we have a phone call? Yes, no? Crane call? No, go ahead, go ahead, come into the thing, Will. They got a hold button over there, I guess.
Make them wait.
City council, as the director of hospitality and private client cells for Tyler Winery, I'm here to show my support for the inclusion of the city of Lompoc in the proposed wine bid. My personal ties to this region make this effort deeply meaningful. I was born in Santa Barbara, lived in Lompoc briefly, but grew up in Santa Maria. For the past 16 years, I've worked in Lompoc's wine industry. From a young age, I was immersed in the beauty and bounty of our region through 4H and FFA. My daughter has followed a similar path, now serving as a proud member of Righetti High School's FFA. Few places in the U.S. can rival the exceptional quality of raw ingredients found here, which serve as the foundation for the agriculture and hospitality industry. It is critical that we work together to ensure the sustainability of these resources and the industries that depend on them. The wine bid represents a united effort to promote this special region on a scale that individual wineries simply cannot achieve alone. At Tyler, more than half of our total production is sold outside of the U.S. I've been fortunate to visit many renowned wine regions and markets, both here in the U.S. and in Europe. The consistent message I bring back home is that as other regions with far greater funding continue to gain market share, collaboration and investment are critical to maintaining and enhancing our competitiveness. Through collective marketing and outreach efforts, we at Tyler have seen firsthand how awareness translates into visits, increased wine consumption, and purchasing in global markets. This connection drives continued growth. But to sustain this momentum, the region needs funding and a thoughtful cohesive approach. The wine bid provides a path toward that future. The economic impact in the wine industry on this county is substantial, with every dollar spent at a winery generating $10 in the local economy. Supporting the wine bid ensures that this impact continues to grow, strengthening not only our wine community, but also the broader local economy. This effort is about more than just tourism, hospitality, or agriculture. It's about financial, social, and economic sustainability. With increased awareness and revenue, businesses like Tyler have been able to create meaningful career opportunities in an industry where long-term positions are often rare due to financial constraints. Thanks to Tyler's global success and recognition, I have had the privilege of working and growing with them for 10 years, a remarkable achievement in hospitality. After 18 years in the hospitality industry, I feel incredibly fortunate to have built a career in the place that I grew up, raising my children in the same wonderful community. I am living proof of what is possible. Growing up, my family received support from the food bank and other social services, and today, I'm proud to be a successful, middle-class professional born and raised here. This is the kind of sustainability the wine bid will help secure for others, not for businesses, but for the professionals and families in this community and across the county who rely on them. Please, help ensure the continued growth and prosperity for our region and its workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Kyle Erwood, and I'm a second-generation winemaker here in Lompoc at Montamar Wines. As you know, Lompoc is nestled in the foothills of the Santa Rita Hills and is a true wine country. I believe we should embrace this identity and leverage it to our advantage by including our town in the Business Improvement District. Lompoc's location makes it ideally situated to become a prominent wine destination. Including our town in the bid would unlock this potential and bring substantial benefits to our community. My father, Steve Erwood, who started Montamar Wines, dedicated himself to promoting Lompoc's growth as a wine destination. He saw this potential and fought tirelessly to make it a reality. We are committed to carrying on his mission and legacy. By supporting the inclusion of Lompoc in the, in the bid, we are not only advocating for our fellow wineries and business owners, but also ensuring the continued vibrancy of the Lompoc community. Unfortunately, the Lompoc wine industry is already somewhat neglected, and if we are not included in this bid, we will be left behind. I fear that many local tasting rooms will have to be forced to relocate or even shut down. We must act now to prevent this outcome and secure prosperous future for our wineries. By supporting the bid, you're supporting Lompoc. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I am Pierre LeBarge, owner of LeBarge Winery. We are a small estate winery located on the western edge of the Santa Rita Hills. I am currently, I serve as president of the board of the Santa Barbara Vintners Association, and I'm also a proud member of the Santa Rita Hills Wine Alliance. My winery is just outside the city limits of Lompoc, thus my bid petition did not count in Lompoc. However, my address states Lompoc, my property taxes go to Lompoc Unified. I frequent many businesses in Lompoc throughout the day, and all of my staff in the vineyard reside in Lompoc. Even Steve Bridge, I store wine at his facility. So I feel like I have a great connection to Lompoc. Over the last 15 years, I've seen Lompoc take steps forwards and backwards, and I truly want what is best for Lompoc, and I have its best interests at heart as well. I have a unique story to tell, because a few years ago, when the bid was first pursued, I wasn't even a member of the Santa Barbara Vintners Association. I even signed a petition in protest against the bid. A fellow winery owner called me to express their opposition, and I just took their word for it without taking the time to learn what the bid was actually about. Here we are a few years later, and I serve as president of the board of the association. So what has changed in such a short period of time? Well, I had some personal reflection after the bid was pulled the first go-around. I was determined to learn more about the association and their pursuit of the bid. I took the time to listen to other board members about the bid, learn about what a bid actually is and how it would positively affect our industry and the local economy, and I got to meet the incredible people behind our association. I immediately joined the association, and then shortly thereafter, I was serving on the board. I'm here tonight to encourage passing the bid in Lompoc and take advantage of the much-needed funding to help the gateway to the Santa Rita Hills effectively market itself. Our businesses are facing major market headwinds right now, and let's be honest, small wineries like mine and many in Lompoc don't have sufficient, if any, funding for, for marketing. Lompoc is an integral part of our wine culture, and we want vintners in the city limits to be a part of this opportunity. We are making some of the best wines in the world, and we deserve to have a strong, well-funded association to help us in such a competitive market. As business improvement districts continue to get formed by other wine regions in California, we will simply get passed by without passing the bid this time around. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration on the vote at hand this evening.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Justin Charbonneau, and I'm the owner and operator of Temperance Sellers here in Lompoc. I'm a native son to Lompoc. My family moved here in 1987 into Elwood Estates, right next to the, the fields owned by the Silvas and the Baileys. So I'm familiar with how important agriculture is to this community. I would hate it whenever they would manure the fields, but yeah. I am for the bid. I really think this is something that Lompoc needs to do. We always talk about like, oh, what can we do to help out Lompoc? Well, this is something we can do today, right now. Lompoc wants this. I, I'm a local, so I've lived here my whole life. I know a lot of people here. In fact, council member Starbuck, I just moved in next door to Dawn, and actually, she's one of my wine club members as well. But yeah, Lompoc wants the wine industry to succeed. Everyone talks about it. We know how world-class it is, how important it is to the rest of the community. This community, Santa Barbara County wines would not be what it is without Lompoc. We are the gateway to the Santa Rita Hills. We are historically cool climate agriculture. Before grapes, we had broccoli and Brussels sprouts and asparagus and all that good stuff. But now we have grapes, so we have to, we have to run with it. We have to support it. This is not something that's just going to happen if we don't, if we don't contribute to this. I don't want Lompoc to miss out. It feels like, I mean, I, I owned a tasting room in the wine ghetto for a couple of years. I had to close down. Business was slow, but I'm still making my own wine because I believe in Lompoc. I believe in the Santa Rita Hills. I believe we can do it. So I, I implore the council to pass this bid. Lompoc wants this, I can assure you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Keith Sarlos. Before we begin, if you are for this bid, can you please stand up? So my name is Keith Sarlos. I'm on the board of the Vintners Association. I had something written, but I think I'll speak from the heart because a lot of people have already said. You think of wine, you know, you think of usually Gucci loafers, but this is really much more of what it looks like. We are almost all sole proprietors. We're people that get up, we're out there at 3:00 in the clock in the morning, we're making something from the heart, and we're doing our best to share our effort of what we've grown, turning it into something magnificent so someone can come into the town, buy it, and bring it home. The only way that that works and the only way that we can be financially viable and provide for our families and for all of the families that work for us, from farm workers to day laborers, to the hospitality industry that is $1.7 billion of economic impact that we do create, we create jobs. If they spend a dollar with us, they're spending $10 coming to visit us. And that's what this bid is meant to do. This bid has one goal. It's not to broadcast who we are around the world. Our goal is to bring people here, to bring people to Santa Barbara County, to bring people to this valley and share what we do. That's the only goal of this bid. It's 1%. We can either pass it on to our consumer on the bottom line, or we can eat it. But right now, we are at a crux, and this is a once-in-a-generation decision that you guys are making today. I wish Brooks Firestone and the leaders of 50 years ago, when they planted the first vines, made a really strong Vintners Association and said, hey, you have to join, you have to pay, let's have a community. Because Santa Barbara County, we are all independents. And by being independent, we never get that warm hug of us all coming together and working for a common goal. We're all screaming as loud as we possibly can, but we're individual voices. And this is the opportunity, this is it, tonight, that you guys can make the decision that we can say our voice together, that we can yell it over the hill and say, come and visit us, because we are what people think wine is. Like everybody here today, if your name's usually on your sign or on your hat, you're wearing it all day. You ride for the brand, and that's what we do here. And if you vote yes, it's only for five years. Give us a shot. It costs you nothing, zero, zero. We're going to do all the work. All we need is. All we need is for you to say, how can we help? Go get them. A vote, just a yes tonight. You can go home and sleep like a baby, because what we will do with that money is create huge economic impact. When we had a couple hundred grand a couple of years ago, we turned it into $50 million. That's sales tax, that's jobs, that's going out and hiring, that is bringing that here. And in a world where things are crumbling, where it's hard to make a buck, we can do it. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Is this our last speaker? We've got more? Could migrate, a few of you migrate a little further.
Dear members of the Lompoc-
Lompoc City Council. My name is Stephen James, and this is my 32nd year in the wine industry, with most of that time spent here in Santa Barbara wine country. I am the estate director for Genie Vineyards, and we farm over 100 acres in the Santa Rita Hills. One of my areas of expertise is in selling wine directly to consumers, and I'm 100% in favor of the wine bid. For 14 of the last 32 years, I worked for several different wineries in Lompoc that all had DTC operations on F Street, Chestnut Avenue, and Industrial Way. Brewer Clifton, Domain de la Coeur, Sandy, and Pence Vineyards are wineries you may recognize. We sold a lot of wine during that time. I'm still so impressed with how far guests traveled to visit us. We, of course, saw locals and Santa Barbarians, but most visitors were from all over the world. I know those against the bid are concerned about the 1% tax on locals, but I guarantee you, the majority of our customers were not even from Lompoc. Additionally, the average retail price of a bottle of wine in Santa Barbara wine country is close to $42, so that equates to only 42 cents per bottle, or 11 cents per glass. This strikes me as a small price to pay. I think the more important issue is what will happen to the Lompoc wineries if the city votes to carve itself out from the bid. They will be removed entirely from all the advertising, the maps, in any of the other benefits that the Santa Barbara Vintners generate. If the city votes no, then I fear for what will happen here. There are already serious headwinds facing the wine industry and is not going to get any easier. Adults are drinking less, there is sober October, there is dry January. Young adults have discovered alternative alcoholic beverages, and even the U.S. Surgeon General is warning about the health benefits of drinking wine. I know many wineries are struggling financially and just getting by. This bid will change that dynamic and will drive people to visit and spend their money here. The economic impact of this is powerful. For every $1 spent at a winery, an additional $10 will be spent in the local economy. The bid will only increase these metrics. I deeply believe that rising tides lifts all boats. We all want Lompoc to be a part of this and see far more strength, united together than separate. Historically, some of the region's best wines have been made here, but the industry is rapidly changing with several new winery investments in other parts of the county. Lompoc must compete now more than ever, and I fear they will sadly be left behind, and I think this will be a tragedy the city and wineries will regret. Please vote yes to let us be a part of this Santa Barbara wine bid. Give it five years. Thank you for your time.
Hi, you guys. My name is Amy Christine. I've never spoken here before. I've never met you, so thanks for having me. I'm proud to be a business owner in Lompoc for over 20 years. My husband Peter and I own Holus Bolus Winery, which is located in Sobani Industrial Park, and the Joy Fantastic Vineyard, which is located off Sweeney Canyon Road. Our vineyard and our production facilities remain here in Lompoc, but as Kyle and Lisa and Justin alluded to, we were forced, really, to leave Lompoc about five years ago and move our tasting room to Los Salivos due to decreasing sales revenue in Lompoc. Los Salivos has become an area that is recognized for wine tourism. In Los Salivos, our monthly DTC revenue increased tenfold compared to what we made in Lompoc, which is why, for Lompoc business owners like me, it would be super unfortunate to have Lompoc opt out of the bid. Lompoc, it has all the elements to be a thriving wine tourism destination, including, and I would say most importantly, being home to some of the most critically renowned vineyards and wineries in Santa Barbara County. And maybe we probably also have the very last affordable hotel rooms anywhere here. And we have so much to offer, but we have to let people know that we exist and to let them know who we are, and we do that through targeted marketing and investment. And everyone's already kind of spoken, but you can ask any winery owner here today, no matter what side of the bid they are on, the wine business is harder than it's ever been, and without marketing, it's just the truth. Lompoc wineries will flounder. It's not even debatable. So that's why I'm here, as a small business owner in Lompoc, to strongly support the approval of the bid for the Wine Preserve and the Santa Barbara Vintners Association. A bid helps us attract visitors, increases tourism spending, and boosts local businesses. It could also give us, meaning my husband and I, and other wineries, the confidence that we're supported here, and it potentially would allow Peter and I to open up our tasting room back up in Lompoc and to have two locations, which would be just a dream come true for us as a business. So, in short, I just want to say, I think we can all agree that Lompoc's wine industry deserves a chance to compete on a larger stage, and with this bid, we can create opportunities to generate revenue and foster growth. We have a world-class wine community here, and we should show people that. So, thank you.
Are you the last one? Anybody else after this?
I think second to last. So a little change of pace. My name's Gavin Shannon. This is my 21st year making wine in Santa Barbara County, my 19th with my own company, which is proudly based here in Lompoc. Our taste room and production is all here on 12th Street. We are small, but we sell wine all over the world and share the story of this amazing region. I love the area and the community. So I come here today with a mixed heart. On the one hand, we desperately need an organization to share the story of Santa Barbara. A lot of people in California have no idea that some of the best wines in the world are made here. On the other hand, the Vintage Association has a less-than-glowing reputation. I experienced this firsthand as a young business owner when they pressured prominent journalists not to write about us. This was way back when, when we didn't have any money to join. It wasn't my last run-in with them, but that was my most unpleasant. I'm not the only person to share experiences like that. It's not the end of the world, but it's not something you forget when you're starting a small business. The Vintage Association today is ran by different people with a different board. I like them all, but I don't have any idea what they do, and it's never been important for my business to become a member. I've asked for information just about the going-on, just what they're working on, and been told this is confidential and for members only. I'm not against business associations. We're members of three of them, but we're members because they do great work and we want to be part of them. At the end of the day, I think the association should be ran for and paid by willing members, willing being the key. Pretty simple idea. I believe the association should do outreach, rebuild themselves, heal old wounds, work to serve the community, grow their membership, and if they did this, we would most likely join. They should not hire lawyers and tax small businesses. That said, the main reason for me coming here today is how this process unfolded. I found out about this meeting today, there is no notification process unless you signed up to support the bid in advance. So there's no notification from the association. Now, to be fair to them, why do they need to associate people that don't support them? At the same time, they're a community organization, so I would argue that. I thought it was appalling, and I think it speaks to some of the tactics us non-members recognize. There's a reason there's so much support here today. You know, I felt it was my duty to come here today, and I had a responsibility, because there's much more vigorous no votes than me. It's not going to earn me any extra Christmas cards, I think. Lack of notification magnifies the feeling that this tax is being forced on us and will not be used to benefit us. Some might say this isn't a tax. That's been argued a lot, but if the government's asking for my money, I'll call it a tax personally. I hope the council protects us by voting no. If the council does support this new tax, I pledge to do everything I can to contribute to its success, and I hope the association turns a new page and reinvends itself.
You had somebody, who was that? Somebody was driving down the road? Are they getting close? Come on down.
Hi. Hi, I'm Frank Ostini. Thank you for listening to us tonight. I have the Hitching Post Restaurant in Beelton, so I've been in the wine business most of my life, well, no, over 40 years. And I've seen from the beginning here, and of course, my family has the Hitching Post in Caspia, so all of your constituents eat in my family's restaurants. But we've, I've been lucky enough to experience what marketing and promotion can do for businesses. We were involved with the movie Sideways, and we got to see so much happen 20 years ago. And even this year, we celebrated 20 years of that event, and the amount of publicity that happened over all that is phenomenal. So I have a high respect for what marketing and promotion can do for a business, a region. And I've kind of made it my, I'm kind of a spokesman for the region with the Santa Rita style barbecue thing that we have always done. We're sort of known worldwide about that. And our wines are spectacular. We have so much passion in this room. I think you could hear it for the businesses that we have, and we're extremely proud of what we do here, too. And I know from experience that my clientele, and the clientele of almost all these wineries, share the passion, and they love our region, they love our wines, and they love us. And I know they will happily support the 1% added to their bill at the end of a wine club purchase or a tasting room purchase. I don't think the, I understand the economies of wineries, it's a tough time, and it's tough for everybody, but I'm looking at the long term. I'm looking to the next generation to carry on what many of us started 40, 50 years ago. And I'm so proud of everything, I'm so proud to be able to say that Lompoc is a part of all this, that some of the best wines of the region were made in the ghetto. And as a matter of fact, many of us are in the wine business because of a vineyard that put Lompoc on their label in 1976, the Sanford and Benedict Vineyard. The world turned their heads to see that great wines could be made here back then, and I know our customers will support the bid, and I hope you guys join in. I want to be able-
Of course, I can always say, Lompoc is a part of my history and our history, but when we can say it in a marketing way, it means a lot, so I hope you guys support it.
Thank you. Is this our speeder? Were you the speeder?
May I?
Yeah, come on down. We're waiting for you.
Thank you. I'm Allison Laslet. I'm the CEO of the Santa Barbara Vintners, and I just wanted to, I wanted to share, I just came from the Santa Maria hearing where this issue was passed. It is so important to the wine industry. I'm sure you have heard, that Lompoc be part of our community. I have run this association and this region for seven years now, and I have seen that at various times, the wine industry has been fractured, and that's not something that we want to perpetuate. It's so important that Lompoc is part of this, because great wines are made here, the wineries are tremendous. And one thing that I think is really important is that this is also a mandate to promote Lompoc and visitation to Lompoc. I think that that's important, because it includes everyone. This particular wine bid, it is countywide. So I just wanted to say how important we think it is that you're included. We are making our way through the cities now, and we hope that the entire community can stand together as one. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any else? You sure? All right. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for deliberations. I don't really like the weakness on noticing. Some people got out there, but there is definitely an overwhelming support. I do like the fact that it's a five-year program. I think that is key on it, that it is flexible, that the tax could be, or the assessment could be taken by the winery, or it could be put on the top. So there are alternatives, and the five-year component. I normally would be opposed to these. I get stuck in the flower business with one of these, and it'd beat up the little guys. But-
I have a couple of questions when you're done, too.
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Yeah. You want to ask the attorney?
No, I don't want to ask the attorney. What I want to ask is anybody that's representing the Vintners Association. We're representing the entire town. Our last meeting, we did have some people that were, that are involved in the wine industry, and they weren't on board, so basically, that's why my statement was there. So basically, with Lompoc, since they weren't part of the T-bid the last time, what was missing, and what did Lompoc lose the last time, okay, and during this last term? If I'm listening correctly, Lompoc wasn't part of this? Does anybody know, or can anybody tell me? And then, basically, for the naysayers, or for the people that feel that maybe they're on the fence, and maybe they're having a tough time right now, how's Lompoc going to be rerepresented if you had to sell it to the people that were kind of not all the way on board because of maybe, I don't know why, maybe it's business? And then again, with the T-bid, the way it is, the way you're structured, yes, it's a five-year contract, but how does the advertising expand to Lompoc within a certain timeframe instead of waiting for three years for Lompoc to come on with the advertising or whatever you guys are doing? Maybe you guys could tell me a little bit about how the promotions would work, so the people that were not on board maybe would feel some sort of hope instead of some sort of stress, you know, because of the additional payments?
Yeah. I think that anytime, in what I have learned-
Let me just interrupt real fast. If you just state your name for the record, it's a little out of norm that we take that, but we're going to consider you an expert.
No, I understand. Allison Laslet, CEO of the Santa Barbara Vintners Association. So it is-
Thank you. And you know, basically, what I want you to do is maybe, from their perspective or for Lompoc's perspective, how would you sell them and tell them, hey, guess what? We're here for you, and this is going to be a great benefit. As a countywide thing, I get it, okay? Everybody wants money, but how it's spent is mandated and controlled by other people. So how does Lompoc feel a little bit better about how the promotions go for this little city? You know, most of the people that are here probably do not have tasting rooms also. They probably have wineries, unless I'm mistaken here, okay? Some people do, some people don't. I'm not sure whether the stress is on the level of people having tasting rooms in Lompoc or not, the additional stress.
Right, right. So I think that anytime a bid is proposed, there's always opposition to it. So I think that's important to understand, and it is a new proposal that, the way the law is written, you do need the majority. It's important to know that almost all bids, when they face renewal, have been renewed. And it is during that process, that five-year process, that people experience the benefits of the Business Improvement District. And I think that's why, it's really an extraordinary percentage. It's in the 90% of bids that renew. And what I was coached by Santa Maria when they initially did their bid was that their hotels, there were some that were not on board, the way that there are some wineries not on board in Lompoc. But when it came time for renewal, they were all on board. So I think that that's just context for business improvement districts. They are always contentious when they are formed. When they renew, they typically re-up. I would say for Lompoc, some of the concern is, some of the concerns that I have heard is that people will complain about the additional assessment. Temecula passed a wine bid four years ago. They have had two complaints in those four years. I think that that is fear, and it's legitimate to worry that your consumers will not want to pay the assessment, but the reality is that that has not borne out. So I think that that's important for people to understand, is that of course, when you have a new assessment or you have a new fee to pay, there are certain fears that come with it and concerns for your business. Again, those are completely legitimate. It's important to look at the way that this all plays out. In terms of Lompoc being included, so the way that the- In terms of, um, Lompoc being included, so the way that the association works, um, just an example, let's take the media. People will reach out to us and they will say, can you, can you, um, send us to your hidden gems? What are your, what are your, your boutique wineries that, that you would like us to experience? And we give them a list of wineries and then that member of the media goes to the ones that they choose. But the list that we give them include, is comprehensive. Um, we pull it from the whole region. So that is something where typically we, of course, we're a membership organization, so we offer our members. In this instance, we can now offer all of the wineries. So if there are wineries in Lompoc that line up with this mythical hidden gem article in Wine Spectator, we can include the Lompoc wineries and we include them right away. This is not that we start with this city and promote it and start with this city and promote it. The other thing that is important to understand is that we are a region and our region is Santa Barbara County. So we will be making regional maps. We will be including the wineries on our websites, all of the wineries. What we don't want to do is not have a city on that map. That doesn't represent our region.
Right.
So the other thing is we had, um, we had about $800,000 in marketing dollars that we received from grants recently in the last, we received one in 2019 for $400,000 and one in 2021 for right around the same amount. And we were able to track the marketing dollars that we spent and the corresponding visitation. Um, we did it through geo-fencing, which is the digital, um, footprints that you can wrap around certain areas and then you can track people's movements. It's a little creepy, but it's, it's really valuable information. So we could see the benefit of these marketing dollars.
You know, the, I think one of the other questions, you mentioned the hotels and the T-bids and things like that, you know? That's why people, some, uh, some people are hesitant and scared to get involved with some of these because some of the larger companies are, are controlling where the marketing dollars are, you know? So basically you get thrown a, a bone, so to speak, you know? And that's what people are afraid of, you know? Because the people that are going to be from Lompoc investing, you know, they, as you know, this, this city is probably, uh, there's a need, there's a need for some help and a boost, you know? I mean, I'm here for the support free enterprise, but I also want them to be successful. We don't want them to, uh, go out of business. So that's the reason I asked because the controlling entities here, like for instance, everyone that joins the, the T-bid or the bid process, uh, are they going to have a say or a voice or is it going to be the entity so large that Lompoc's just going to get thrown a bone and nobody has any input is what I'm saying.
So I think it's important to understand that every member is eligible to run for the board. So that is, I, I have learned with a membership association that the more you are involved, um, the more that you get from it. So I think that that is true in all instances. I would love to see, um, Lompoc members in this room raise their hand to be on our board. We do not have the kind of board that is comprised exclusively of large wineries or exclusively small wineries.
Is there anybody on the board right now that's representing Lompoc on your T-bid?
Uh, Pierre Labarge.
Okay.
Amy Christine is on the board. I don't know. Uh, Brooke Christian from Longoria.
Okay. Just want to make sure that there is somebody here that's local, you know?
Yes.
Instead of being sold something.
Right.
Because countywide we get sold and it doesn't really work, you know what I mean? Because then we had, don't have a voice.
Yep.
Can you bring him up? Uh, but, because I gotta, we already, if you could, sit down and we-
Yes.
Let's see if we get something else. I just wanted to roll into deliberations.
Thank you so much for the questions from all of you.
Yeah, some civil, but what I am going to ask is there was one gentleman in opposition. Is he still here? If you had something else to say, I, just in sake of fairness, if you had anything that you wanted to add, just because I don't want to look like we're cited, if you had something, you would come to the podium and just, if you want to, you don't have to. I just want to be, I mean, I usually, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's unfortunate that we didn't have, we had the city attorney during the presentation. We, we were kind of left in the dark too. And it was through a motion of us to even get this on agenda. So we kind of got like thised. So we, we had very limited movement on this as well. So if we hadn't done it and the staff hadn't brought it back, it wouldn't be here, right? We wouldn't be talking about it. And it was that, anyhow. So if you, if you had something that you wanted to say, just in sake of fairness, um, I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like they're offering you to be on the board.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I'm coming.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, guys.
Be careful what you wish for. Um, no, the, uh, you know, once these things start, you can never get rid of them. As a small business owner, it's a, I mean, to be honest, it's another piece of paper you're trying to fill out. It's another reporting cycle. Yes, it's easy. You pull the tax, you do this, you do this, your CPA do that. So to me, it's just like another thing. And then how many people spoke tonight are not members of the association? One. Um, but you guys are in the, it's-
One.
Okay, two.
A second, yeah, don't-
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Apologies. Um, you know, it's, it's an association that currently represents a very small amount of the wineries here. And that's important because the deluge of support, which is all had, had great points, um, it doesn't represent 400 wineries or 350, however many we have. So I, I think this process from the beginning, many years ago in 2019, would have been better served to bring in the dissenters in. And instead it's kind of been, uh, the opposite where like I said earlier, if you're not, if you haven't signed to be supportive, you, you don't even know these things are happening. Granted, I should probably be reading the minutes as a Lompoc business owner, but again, another piece of paper that I don't do. So I, I, I would just leave it at that. And, um, you know, there is a thriving community here. We do need a, a group, but I, I just don't feel like it should be forced on us.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back for you guys. You have anything you want to say, you want something, what do you want to talk about? Go ahead, Councilmember Starbuck.
Did I get the name right? Carpenter?
Okay.
I got questions.
Yes.
You, you put yourself out there and you didn't bring wine, so you're, your turn.
Normally we want to do this, but in our situation without the expert that was, anyhow, other than our city attorney Will.
Um, so you got 400,000 in grants. A few years later, you got 400,000 in grants. Now you want 1.6 approximate or in five years, roughly eight million. There's a big difference. You know, I'm talking about a lot of money and you're talking about 70-some wineries in Lompoc shelling out. I don't know how you divide that, but I, I'm just going to say it's a lot of money in five years. So I think that the people that are dissenting, forced in, et cetera, would expect quite a bit of bang out of that much money.
Oh, I would hope so.
Yeah, I do too. That's why I'm bringing it up here.
Yeah.
I got a question for you.
Yeah.
How do we get out of it if this is some kind of a, something that just isn't working?
Ah.
Is it, is it a contract for five years? Or can these guys go, hey, forget you and just bail?
Well, it is a mandate, but let me, let me start with, how do you get the, how do you feel the bang for the buck? That's what you're saying or how do we-
No, I'm just wondering how they get out if they don't want to be there.
Oh, well, this is, it comes up every five years. So it has to run its term.
So once we're in for five, we're here for five.
No, then you can, we do the same thing all over again and we, you can all-
But a year from now, bring it up and say, forget it, we're going to repeal this tax on our small wineries?
No, we also have-
So it's five years.
Five years, right? Yeah, five years.
So it's five years, no matter what then?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no.
You know what's interesting here?
Councilmember Starbuck, it's not five years. There, the term is five years, but there are points during that five years that the number of assessed businesses, if it equals more than 50% of the funds collected, can petition the county to dissolve the, um, district prior to the five-year term.
I think that would be something important for our smaller vendors around here to know if this passes. I mean, yeah. Um, I found it kind of interesting here, there was a lot of participation from you, a lot of letters, they all came in, it was almost a form letter, but nobody here has a tasting room in Lompoc that I saw.
No, that's-
Okay, I'm sorry then, I just, some of you didn't speak, one or two. I, I was just saying, I had, I moved, I'm gone and, you know, so, all right. Um, I'll tell you something else I noticed, and this is Venters, not wine bid. You used to move the Venters Festival. Yeah, and you moved it and it hasn't been back. Why? You know, you said, oh, it was a little windy and cold and the terrain was a little rough where we had it here. So you moved to a cow pasture in Zaca. You know, I'm, I'm just saying, it's, I feel like Lompoc has always been slighted slightly with this. I'm not into the wine and, and all, but what I see, you know, how come we haven't had a Venters Festival here? It's probably been, I don't know, how many years?
Last one was 2017.
That's a long time.
Understood. We also had three years that we didn't have it because of COVID. So we do have to accommodate.
Yeah, you think there's plans, maybe-
Yeah, that would be-
If this passes and we have to force our local wineries in, do you think you could accommodate by maybe doing something here in the next five years?
That is, that is definitely on the table.
Yep, that's on the table. I count on some of the people I know around here to maybe raise their hand for the city here, but I'm going to stew on this a few minutes and you got good neighbors till I come visit.
Understood. Okay. And I will say that the best part about this is that everybody has an equal say. Anybody from the largest member of, largest producer in this county to the 500 case producer that we have in the room today, equal, equal voice. They could all join the board. They all have say and they can steer our marketing, they can steer our board, they can steer our advocacy, they can steer where we put our Ventners Festival. We can listen to all the voices. We would all be unified. So these are all on the table. So-
All right.
Any more questions?
Thank you. Let me bring it back. City attorney, is there a way that we could in a resolution that has to come back in five years for approval of us, of the council, whoever's sitting up here?
Um, that's a good question.
I mean, they make it, they make it on the duration, a five-year life in the overview section right there?
Let me, uh, look that up if you could keep talking or keep deliberating for a while and I can look at the statute on renewal.
We can get Councilmember Starbuck to ask us a question. We had some calisthenics going on out there. That was pretty good. We, you guys got it pretty fast.
Okay.
No. Um, did you see where I, where I was talking about on page three in the overview? Where it says the duration? We'll have a five-year life beginning April 1st, 2025, as soon as possible thereafter and ending five years from the start date. May be renewed pursuant to the Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994?
Yeah. It, it, and that law, which I'm looking at right now, says that for renewal at the five-year point, the procedures to renew are exactly the same as the procedures for establishment. But I'm not sure whether that means that the city council of each city has to consent again at the renewal point. And I would lean towards saying that the, uh, all the cities do not need to consent again and that the county can just decide to renew, um, if there are enough support of the wineries at the five-year mark and that that renewal would apply in every city that has consented now in 2024. We could put a provision in our resolution that says Lompoc is only in for the first five years and that at the five-year point at renewal, has to come back to the city of Lompoc to consent again. And, um, we can put that in there.
Might not work though.
It, it may or may not work. I can't answer that right now without doing the research on it. So, um, if, so-
So it's a little deceiving when they say it's a five-year life.
Yeah. I have a question, Jim, when you're done there, but-
When you guys speak off, off mic.
Yeah, you guys, we'll get too wild, we won't know who's communicating here. I don't, and I know we're a little bit sideways with this one because-
Yeah.
Because we don't have, we don't have this, the other side here. We have, so bear with us here. I mean, we're trying to figure it out and I know there are concerns. I did, with ex parte disclosure, I had a number of people called me today and they were smaller people and actually a little intimidated to communicate about it, but they, they, it appears the smaller people had more opposition. And I get it, you know, the, the little guy, you have an opportunity to be out there in your spare time and the little guy doesn't necessarily have the spare time. Big guys, a lot of them don't have either, but it's, it, we want to have a level of fairness in here. And if I knew for sure that we could get out of there in five years, you're actually kind of, you know, it's kind of weird for me to support something like this, but I would support it. We definitely had a lot of vocalization and, and support of it. I think if we, we be with the, you know, the city attorney got steam coming out of his ears.
Yeah.
That, that we could get out of it in five years or at least bring it back for the communication. If it doesn't work, we had the opposition, um, I, I would be willing to risk doing this with the amount of support that I've seen here, that we have that, that we add the five here in our resolution as well. Some language with some teeth in it. Um, you had something to add, Councilmember Vega?
Just, just a question for clarification, if I could, okay? Um, we have this T-bid here and it's something that was created by the county of Santa Barbara that requires the city to vote for it too. Is that correct, uh, Mr. Attorney?
Well, it requires the city to vote for it if it's going to apply within Lompoc.
So we are actually imposing a tax on them and then we have no control or no way to rescind it. So it's basically a one-time approval so that they can charge California sales tax to create this, uh, improvement district. Is that correct from, I'm reading from my staff report?
It's, it's not sales tax, but it's an additional 1% assessment in addition to sales tax. And essentially, yes.
Yeah, and you know, I, I think what the mayor's asking for is a resolution to ask them to come back, but it just is not there, you know? It's not, that's not the kind of control they're asking for right now. You know, for them to bring it back to us so we can give our blessing, it just doesn't, uh, it doesn't fly with me, you know? I, I just, I just don't think we should be adding more rules to, um, what is meant to be here. This is a T-bid, this is a, a tax for the Venters Association, which is ongoing. And then after that, it's up to you whether you want to join the Venters Association or not, correct? I just have a problem with us approving an ongoing tax that we don't have anything to do with after that. You know, I can see why people are a little bit, uh, up in arms a little bit.
Well, it does only last for five years.
I know, they keep saying it'll only last for five years. Five years is a long time.
Okay.
Some of us may not be around in five years, so I, I beg to differ that five years is a, is a lengthy amount of time.
I was just responding to your-
I got you.
-comment that you said it was on-
And then the amount of money is, you know, eight million dollars is a lot of money. So it's just, I think we need to think hard on this instead of trying to rework it and put some plastic into this to make it work for somebody. I just, anyway, thank you for the clarification.
Mayor and council, I think it's also important for me to say that, um, in order to pass any resolution, you do need to have a majority of the full council. So that would be three members have to vote in favor to pass the resolution. So in order for the resolution consent to pass tonight, it will need to be all three of you in agreement.
Makes it more complicated, right? You have one more question? You could, do you, do you want, I mean, I, well, we can try one more time.
No, thank you.
Okay.
I've been answering and I think everybody here's, uh, on board here and up and up and just want survival. I just have a problem with imposing a tax on somebody, okay, that doesn't want it.
I agree, but I think if we, we can put that caveat, I'd make the motion, let's go ahead and fire a shot and see what happens, that, that we approve this with some teeth and a language of the five-year that come back on this, as we've discussed, that you have in there. We've, we've seen some head nods that says that, that it does work. We, you had your chance, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I have information for this particular issue.
You can ask questions to members of the public.
Okay, go ahead, come back up. Come on down.
And I think-
You drove, you drove so fast to get here. here. I just try not because you know what I'm saying.
There does need to be a question, though. And I think the question is, at the renewal point in five years, in other bids that you might be aware of, is all the consent of all the cities sought again?
Yes, I understand what the question is. So I just texted Civitas, which is the consulting firm that wrote the law in 1994. And we do work with them. And they said that you may write it into the resolution that in five years, Lompoc requires consent from the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So there, that's, we've got a five-year comeback on this. So that's my motion that we go ahead and approve this with that. Question? Or you give me a second?
Well, I'm trying to give you a second, but my machine isn't working.
There you go. Fire away.
I just say, well.
Yep. Go ahead, Will.
I got it. I got it here.
I just want to say for the record that that is based on past experience of Civitas, which is in this industry, but it is not a guarantee under the law that that's what a court would decide. But it does seem like that is the intent of the statute.
Okay.
All right. Well, yeah, I'm, I'm going to give you a, give you a second on this, Mayor. I'm going to mention that I think this assessment is going to provide an overall value to the city. I'm very conflicted if it's going to provide a value to our small vendors. I'm rolling the dice on this and I'm going to count on this association to not be sliding the small people or the city. We get slighted a lot. When you use the word Santa Barbara County around me, it gets me hackled. So I'm just going to throw that out. But you got a second from me and two.
So before you move forward, we're talking five years. You're talking January 2029? Is that correct? Is that when you want it to come back? Or do you want it to come back before January?
As for the dates, as for the dates that are here, city attorney sees the dates, the start date, I mean, obviously it has to come back.
I don't think we're going to know an exact date for when we will bring it back to council. It's going to be when the district is about to expire and it's going through the renewal process at the county. At that time, we will have to have a consent vote by the city council to continue participating. And we won't know exactly the date when that is yet.
Thank you.
The city attorney has the language there.
Thank you.
And hopefully it's not like this one happened here on New Year's Eve and such, right? All right. Any questions in the motion? All right. Go ahead and vote. They had a, two yeses, one no, and two absent. Is there anything that you can do to change on that, Councilmember Vega? Is there something that would bring you along with that? No? Okay. All right.
So we have a resolution of opposition, but we, it does not need to be passed. It's just consent or not consent. So at this point, that motion failed with Councilmember Vega voting no, Councilmember Roseveen Starbuck voting yes, and the two others absent due to recusals. And so the result of that is city of Lompoc does not consent.
All right. Where's the other Councilmember Bridge and Councilmember Ball? Come on down. Did they get lunch somewhere or something? Come on down. Woo-hoo. You guys missed out on all the fun. Some fight, Councilmember Bridge? Uh-oh. Do we need an APB form or something? Find him? Chippy fight him out there. That's not him.
He got arrested.
No way. Sorry about that. I thought you were out there getting snacks or something. Yeah? The coffee out there still? Okay. All right. Item number eight, city attorney again.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is the follow-up item from last meeting. I think it was last meeting, yeah. Council was reviewing the handbook for commissions, committees, and boards at the last meeting and gave direction to staff to make some revisions to that handbook. So we have this agenda item tonight with a resolution and an ordinance. The resolution would make revisions to the handbook the council requested. And the ordinance would make the necessary changes to the municipal code that are needed because some of the commissions have rules that are in the municipal code. A brief summary of the changes that the council directed and that are in the new handbook attached to the staff report is the removal of the districting requirement for all of the commissions that had it. And the Beautification and Parks and Recreation Commission was split into two separate commissions as it used to be, the Beautification and Appearance Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission. The meeting schedule of the Public Safety Commission was changed to monthly to be located in the city council chamber here at City Hall or at an alternative location if it's approved by the commission. There were several revisions to the functions and purpose of the Utility Commission. And there was a change made. So it says the Utility Commission shall meet monthly in the council chamber at City Hall. And there was one of the uses and purposes of the functions and purposes of the Beautification and Appearance Commission. It was added that they shall receive and consider public input on streets and sidewalk issues if a member of the public attends and has a comment about that or a request. Also, city council directed staff to return with an agenda item in six months to review how these new changes to the commissions are working. So the resolution and ordinance would make those changes. And that concludes the staff report unless there's questions.
Questions for the city attorney? They getting off easy tonight. All right. Let's bring it back to the council. Anybody want to deliberate on this? Make a motion? What do we got? Councilmember Bridge, you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. We accept staff's recommendation with one change. And you could pass this out. We went around and around about the Public Safety Commission. And I think part of the problem is that it doesn't have a good definition as to what the public safety is, council or commission is for. So I've reworded that a little bit as to just make it a little clearer and added actual functionality, which are the three bullets you can see there, and then deliverables. And I'd like the council to pass that with this amendment.
Councilmember Bridge, we, first of all, we need to have at least one copy available for the public since we passed this out to the entire council. Public can see my copy and we can do it that way if the public would like. But I need to, I'm seeing a red line here. So you've crossed out general functions.
Well, I didn't cross out general function. I crossed out the, the brief explanation of what it was about and the three particular goals that the council had. And I replaced it with a more comprehensive explanation for the commission and created very similar goals with actual deliverables to come back to the council. And then the.
Okay. So this is, looks like this is on page 32 of the handbook. That's the youth commission. Page 28 of the clean copy of the handbook. So under general functions, all of that down to paragraph number three would be crossed out.
Yes.
And then it would be replaced with what you have here on the sheet that you handed out in red. Okay. Council should consider and deliberate about.
Your life.
All right. Just on the quick review I've had of this, this is the first time we've seen it. This isn't just a simple modification. This is leaning more towards an oversight committee for the police department and the fire department. And there's no need for this in our community. I agree with having a commission to share information, but to have a non-sworn entity having involvement in police policies? This is something that needs to be discussed and looked into much further than just being dropped in our lap
Could I make a couple of comments?
Yes, Councilmember.
So again, with all respect to Councilmember Bridge, I think that updates and changes are reasonable. And I think that when council and the public has a chance to flush out those changes and understand the impacts of those changes, I think that's reasonable. So again, I'm not necessarily against these changes, but I think it would be better to have a forum where the people could also show up and voice their opinions on what these changes would mean. And I don't mind that folks have an oversight perhaps, but we also have heard from them about a number of meetings and how often. And so I feel like we should listen to them a little bit here on that. So I don't know. Just my two
I think this would be something that could be reviewed by the Public Safety Commission once we get the feet on the ground and bring back at the six month for discussion so that people could say, as Chief Martin has said, it's not just a little bit, this is a lot. And I think that we could, you know, it's a lot to get hit at right now. I hear you.
The only time we can bring these in.
I got you. No, it's fine. You're doing fine. I'm not, but let's, let's get our first Public Safety Commission and then it can be, my suggestion is, you came up with a lot of interesting items here that deserve a lot of conversation. And I think the chief's got a lot to say about it. But I believe that what, maybe what we could do is put this on the agenda for the Public Safety Commission because they are recommendations to us.
Well, if I could just jump in there, Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
So what I would hope for Mr. Bridge is that we've already set up a meeting time. I'm organized. We're already set up for having a meeting for you to tour the police department and find out a little bit more about us. I would ask that you have that meeting and we can discuss these things in detail, you and I and my staff. And then we can come back and deliberate this with the council at a later date. I have meetings scheduled with all of the council to do this. And if you can sell me on why you think this is needed, I'm happy to listen. But maybe give me the opportunity to say, well, this is probably not a good idea for our community because of. But to do it in this environment right now may be a little premature. We should probably have that meeting first.
Well, I can understand that position. I think you were in the meeting earlier when my frustration level climbed because very clearly I'm supposed to bring all of this to this forum at this time. And this is really the first opportunity I had to do it and follow the rules. So perhaps we should approve the handbook less this and have an agreement that it will get agendized and come back in a month.
See, I'm, I'm in, I'm full favor of it coming back. With all respect, if I, and again, hear me out, if I had shown up and I had my feelings, strong feelings, and I had rewritten something, and a few minutes before you needed to make a strategic, strategic decision on this, I handed it to you all and said, hey, I think we should change this. Just trust me. You would ask me to slow down a little bit. Maybe let's go through the details and make sure that what I've come up with is actually a good idea. Now, I'm not questioning whether or not this is a good idea. I just don't have time right now to analyze it and think about it. I'd love that time.
I fully understand everybody's frustration. You're now feeling the frustration that I have, which is, I can't send this out to you before this meeting.
Sure.
They won't let me do that. So the only time I have to put in my two cents on these things is in this forum. It sucks. So we'd like to delay this and have it come back at another time. I'm more than happy to do that.
It doesn't have to be a long delay. From, from my perspective, I'd just love some time to run.
Yeah, let's, let me bring it back here for a second. I got one little question when I can.
Councilmember Vega.
I don't think we should, we should maybe bring it back so for discussion with the council. But to run it back by public safety, I don't think that's necessary. We're the, we're the governing body. You know, the public safety is going to be a brand new commission. They're not even going to know what the heck's going on. I think that it's us. Many people that have approached me told us they would like to see a stronger council, make some decisions. So I don't think we should probably throw it off under a commission that probably isn't going to know what's going to go on. It may be a delay tactic, but let's make the decisions ourselves between up here in the dais and with the, with the chief of police and see what we can do and cope with some common sense that we can all live with. That's, that's my thing. Let's just throw it off on a commission.
All right. Well, let's, let's go ahead and, did you want to make the motion to approve the handbook as, as written and then make a second motion to bring this back? This should give you time to meet with the chief and we can see.
Sure.
See what's up. Is that what you'd like to, can you do that?
I can do that.
All right.
So I'm making a motion. We approve the staff's recommendation of the book. Is that good enough?
My machine's broke again.
I mean, technically, there's, staff does not have a recommendation on this. So the.
So we're approving the modification adopted.
Adopt the resolution and introduce the ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. So we got a first on that with Bridge and I got a second with Starbuck.
And that does not include this handout, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Quick clarification. Are, are we bringing back in terms of?
I'm going to make a motion right soon.
I get that. But in terms of, the only thing that I was against last time was a small detail about the quantity or how often we, the Public Safety Commission.
Let's see what we can do on that one.
Is that one coming back as well?
This one?
Meaning if I vote yes on this, I may disagree on.
No, no, no. That's a separate motion.
Just making sure.
But what is coming back is, as part of this motion, as read, if I understand it correctly, is in six months, we're coming back and reviewing the frequency of at least some of these meetings. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that would show up on our list six months from today.
Okay.
Will it go up? It can go on the future agenda item list.
Six months from today or six months from the date that the, or notice is.
I think, I think it was six months from the last council meeting, isn't it? Whatever the council would like.
It says the city council also directed staff to turn with an agenda item in six months for the council review how the new changes to the commissions are working. So in six months from approving this, I imagine. Okay?
So we're clear, the second meeting of June 2025?
Sure. Done good?
Sounds good.
Okay. So we have a first and a second on that? Or we give you your second on that? Okay. All right. So let's go ahead and vote. All right. So along with this, you have.
I'd like to make a second motion that my suggested red lines come back within 45 days for review, for inclusion in the handbook.
For discussion of possible.
We will need to have an oral vote because our voting system...
Did you want to call?
Yes. Councilmember Vega?
You got to say it.
You have to say it.
Do I have to say it again? Was that, what am I saying?
You just have to vote yes. Councilmember Bridge?
Yes.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yes.
Councilmember Ball?
Yes.
Yes. Is that for you, Steve? Yes.
Okay. Going on, good communications. Nothing more than you've already received. There were several emails that were delivered and provided to you, posted to the website and placed outside for the public.
All right, we have an oral communication. This is two minutes left. Who's got something to say on oral communications? Come on down. All right. Very good. Then we'll move on to council comments and meeting reports. Who wants to go first? Go line up. How about Councilmember Vega, got something?
I do have a council request, if I could. I think now with the new council taking over and I think us moving forward and trying to be a little proactive, I think we should get a few things out of the way. I think we should, I'd like to call on the city attorney, like to get a review of their contract and have a discussion, including possible action. So I think it's been a while since we had a sit-down with the city attorney, so hopefully we all can do that. That way we can confirm our direction and see where we're going with this. And now with the new council here, I think that, I think we deserve that discussion. So I'd like to call it. It's an at-will contract, and I want to make sure we do that, yeah.
Is there a time already set on your contract for a review?
For, not for review of the contract, no.
Yeah, the city attorney's only when we call it.
Very good.
So if you guys would, I think we deserve a sit-down with the city attorney's office, make sure we're all going in the same direction, and make sure we understand what the responsibilities are on his end so we can make better decisions and along with possible action.
All right, we have a motion, or well, I just need two others.
That was my motion.
Need two others to go along with that.
Two others, guys, so we can sit down and have the review.
I'd give you an okay on that.
Yeah, I think we need to have a conversation.
Okay. And Councilmember Bridge for the third.
I have one more council request. Yeah, go ahead. And I'd like to have another staff coming back with a review of our utility policies regarding our billing and policies as far as responsibilities. We need some clarification. We've had a lot of requests and people asking, you know, their bills and how we're getting billed, so I think we need to have a sit-down with staff out here, and we can ask some questions and have some clarifications on the responsibilities of utility bills and how they're being addressed. Previously, we did have a policy on collections and things like that, and I don't think we do that anymore, but I want it to be clarified for the public so that we can see where we go, and again, with possible action. So we can give some answers to the people out there that are stressing over their utility bill. At least we can give them answers.
And it's, we had one a number of years ago. Is that something that you could do with the utility director and utility billing staff to the city attorney? To the city manager?
You just want to bring back the utility billing?
Discussion of how it's...
Discussion on utility policies and regarding billing and responsibilities as far as, we just had some big changes, which along with the fee increases, it also gave responsibilities for billing for trash and things like that. I've had a lot of calls from owners and stuff, and they want to get it clarified, people with multi-units and things like that. There's a big change there on having owners being responsible for all of it, and it has to be passed down to tenants. So I think we need to have a clarification so, because the tenants ultimately are responsible for that, they're going to wonder why their rents are increasing along with our fee schedule, so I think we just need some answers.
I give you a second on that. We have a third for discussion and possible action on utility billing procedures and stuff for, as in educational and stuff, to have a third?
I'll give him a third.
Okay, there's a third with Bridge. All right. Councilmember Bridge, any council comments, meeting reports?
Yeah, let's see, I attended the teen center jazz evening. That was a wonderful time. I think there were a couple other folks there, Jones there, and I gave a speech to the Martin Luther King Black Students Union on Martin Luther King evening for the candle vigil. And then I would like to have brought back for discussion the process for things being maintained and brought back for council requests.
Part, what was that you said? Maintain or what'd you say?
Yeah, for the council requests. We went over that...
Right.
Really large discussion, which was out of order. I'd like to bring it back so we can talk about it.
Talk about the process of the council request?
Setting the dates for council requests and maintaining the list.
I'll give you a second. And I'll give you a third.
Okay. Councilmember Ball?
Let's see, the only thing I wanted to report, I had a really awesome time participating in the Martin Luther King celebration that they had at the Dewey Center. Mayor was there, glad you attended. Mr. Starbuck was there as well. It was a great event, it was packed, beautiful day. Happy to be there.
And great tamales too, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilmember Starbuck, usually I have 20 seconds.
No reports.
What? All right, very good. Let's see. I like this puzzled look. And I did also attend the Martin Luther King event at the Dick Dewey Center. And I want to thank the police department for, I mean, less than 24 hours after an item of mine was stolen and he's went out there and got it done, and the people replaced it. They brought it back. Amazing. Great job. I mean, what can you say? Good job, guys. I appreciate that. And I've heard a lot of other good things like that too when the city is going on, and just say, keep doing what you guys are doing. Really doing a great job out there. Let's see, I think... I had a long list, but I think we got through most of that. So we're going to adjourn until February 4th at 6:30 PM.